If you're able to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Next order of business is public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Keith McCarthy, 44th Street, also known as Owen's Dad.
Mr. McCarthy, welcome.
I just wanted to thank this board, thank Mr. Lynch for all the great things that go on in our schools. Owen's my second graduate through the schools. Excuse me. One more to go. And with very few exceptions, we found the school system to be supportive of the students, creative in getting them to learn, and just all in all, an excellent experience. All culminates with senior week that's going on this week. And again, a great thank you. My siblings go to other school districts and they don't have half of the activities that they do through the college signing, the yearbooks, the next week, the scholarship banquet, the final awards, and then the senior walk. All those things, not all of those things happen in other communities the way they happen here. So again, thank you very much. Mr. Brannigan, a quick conversation with him about how much work he has ahead of him the next week as well. Sean Siciliano for publishing all that stuff out for everyone. Again, huge thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have anything, any public comment they wish to mention? Seeing no one, well, that moves beautifully into our recognitions tonight. And our first recognition is to Owen. As Mr. McCarthy just said, tonight really starts senior week because this is the first time we honor a senior here tonight. It's tough for me because my son graduates with Owen and he'll be my last to graduate high school. And I went through it two years ago, so thankfully I know what to expect. But as this has come up, it hasn't made it that much easier, as I'm sure you both well know. Owen, you know, you're, again, you're a fantastic individual, a great student, and a tremendous leader, not only from this committee, but in everything you do. Whether it be the first time I met Owen, interestingly enough to the young lady who'll be up here in a few minutes, Owen, five years ago, was our Project 351 representative at the middle school. And that was the first time I met Owen. I've had conversations with Owen all throughout. I remember when Ben left, Ben Sangiolo, Ben said specifically, "Mr. Young, you're gonna have a great person come after me who's fantastic in Owen because Owen is a leader." And no greater words were said by any student before. "Owen, you've been fantastic." You know, I posted today on my Facebook page that this was the start of it tonight and that some of the things that you had done, I put, you know, "You're a mentor in the unified basketball team. I know you're an athlete." We'll use that word in quotations. "You're a leader in student council and student government, and time and time again, you step up." I think one of the, in my mind, one of the things that I will most remember you about this year, and I know the superintendent will too, is both the superintendent and I having traveled to away playoff games to find Owen somewhere in the stands yelling at either the other team or Middleborough to the point that we would both start cracking up because we knew exactly who it was and what was saying. And it just made, I know it cracked up everybody, and then, I know in the soccer game, both you and my son were having a blast that day. So Owen, you've been fantastic. I can't say anything more, so I'm gonna ask if any of the committee members want to say anything and turn it over to them.
Brian. I want to say thank you for being here. Thank you for letting us have him. You have been a true ambassador of this community, and you will, I'm sure, continue being an ambassador. And what I find most impressive, and I've always said this, I used to interview a lot of students coming through the co-op internship program at Northeast into my office, and I always used to say, "You see all these students, there are A students in this, but they weren't well-rounded." I've seen you everywhere, anywhere and everywhere, including Shaw's. I've seen you, I mean, that is what I call a well-rounded person, that has a little bit of everything, you do it, and you seem to excel at it, which is, which is great. And I recall that Rehoboth soccer game too. There was a couple, a lot of people at the far end, but that enthusiasm, that spirit at football games, I've seen you all four years at these games. And that's what, when I think of every student every day, I think of people like Owen, and that's what we're talking about, that full embodiment of what you can be. It's not just about the classes that you take at school, it's the entire piece. And I look at you as a role model, like I said, an ambassador. And thank you.
I was gonna say, I've also seen Owen at a football game covered, I think with orange dye at one time, I don't know. But I was, you know, it's true, you see Owen everywhere, but I really appreciate his reports 'cause it just gives a nice perspective we don't always hear about. You know, it's nice to hear a student's perspective about what's going on in their life and the school. So I think every week Owen comes well-prepared and well-spoken on all the events going on. So thank you for all the reports, I appreciate it.
I just want to say, I wish you the best of luck. You're gonna be at the next meeting? No? Yes?
No, he's done.
So I hope that you will come back and share whatever success you have in the future 'cause obviously there's going to be a lot of that, so come back when you, you know, don't forget about us.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Owen, I haven't known you for as long as my colleagues here, but from what I can tell, well, first, before I say that, I've noticed that life is much, much busier for kids in high school than it was when I went to high school. And so the fact that you come here, you put in the effort to learn about, well, not only be at, but learn about all of the activities that go on around school and to update us on that, I think it'd be really easy for you to just be like, you know, "Life's too busy, I can't do this right now." But the fact that you're able to dig a little deeper and pull out that little extra effort and a lot of extra effort and come here and do stuff like this, I think that will take you really far. So I guess just don't forget, you know, that you were able to do that now 'cause it's certainly gonna be asked of you a lot more later in life, and it seems like you're built for that. So, yeah, again, appreciate you guys sharing them with us. We appreciate it quite a bit.
So Owen, I know as of next Saturday, that ends the sachem experience, and then you start the Red Storm Experience at St. John's. So congratulations to that. But on behalf of the committee, we wanted to present you with this plaque. And the plaque says, "O N W McCarthy, Student Representative to Middleborough School Committee, 2016-2019. Your service and dedication to the Middleborough Public Schools is greatly appreciated. Many thanks for being school committee strong." If you don't mind, Owen, I'll hand you that. (Applause). I'd ask you guys to follow and practice that if you guys want to come and take a picture with us. Andy, do you want to go? (Laughter).
It's only five of them.
Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. Perfect.
Want to, or if you have ideas of how to make the experience better for the next person, please let us know.
I have something at the end of my report.
Sure. And I will call Greg Thomas now, principal of the middle school, and he's gonna talk to us about this year's Project 351 rep. Welcome, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We are very fortunate at the Nichols Middle School. Project 351 is an opportunity, I think Governor Patrick started it, and it's an opportunity for eighth graders, one eighth grader from every town in the state to come together and work on leadership and community service. And so at the start of the year, Project 351 contacts all the schools and asks for us to put forward a student to represent our town. And the way we did it at the Nichols Middle School is I reached out to our eighth grade teachers and asked them who they thought was most deserving. And by far, Haley Soule's name came up. Haley Soule is the epitome of what we look for in a Nichols Middle School student. She exemplifies what it means to be a Tiger. And Mr. Brannigan is lucky because we're congratulating Owen and he's moving on, but he's gonna get a great sachem in Haley. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome Haley and congratulate her.
Sure.
Because she's done wonderful things, you know, representing Middleborough for Project 351.
Come on down, Haley. (Applause).
Hi.
So how do you like Project 351 this year?
I really love it. It's an amazing opportunity, and it's so much fun.
Can you talk to us a little about your community service project? Because I saw you out one Saturday, I believe, collecting, so why don't you talk to us about that?
Yeah, so we were doing a clothing drive for Crayons to Crayons, and I did a clothing drive at the Nichols Middle School, at the Henry B. Berkland, and on one Saturday for a couple hours, just standing outside the church. And we collected about forty-one bags for Crayons to Crayons, about twelve bags for Savers and four bags for the HBB donation bin.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Which helped a lot of kids who needed the donations of clothes and shoes from Crayons to Crayons, and everyone, and anyone else served from Savers and the Berkland.
Wow, that's fantastic. And would you recommend the program to the seventh graders coming up to eighth grade now?
Yeah, I think they would love it. I think anyone would love it. It's so much fun, you meet so many new people. It's just a great experience overall.
Do any, does anyone have any questions for Haley? Mr. Oakley?
I just wondered if you could talk about, what's one thing that you learned that you think you'll take forward after going through that experience?
Probably how to start a clothing drive or any drive at all, and work with people, and how to just make a drive successful.
Cool.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
One thing I've always, one thing I've always said to a lot of people, I've said that to a lot of people, when people say, you know, how to get involved, the hardest part of being involved with anything, and you just, what you were touching upon is how to run a clothing drive. People don't know how to get involved. Once you get involved, you're involved now, between this project and when you move forward up to the high school with the rest of the sachems, you're gonna find yourself the ability to get, you're involved now, stay involved. I encourage everyone to stay involved. Once you get involved, just stay involved, and it's actually easier to stay involved than it is to get involved. Now that you're involved, and like I said, I say this to everybody, just get involved, try something. You've now tried something, you've succeeded, and we've seen success, so continue, and I wish you more success.
Anybody else? Haley, thank you for coming.
Who'd you bring with her today?
Who'd you bring with you today, Haley?
My parents and my brother and sister.
Great. Well, we're glad to hear that you're going to the high school and Mr. Brannigan got you. I think you'll find there are lots of opportunities to become involved in the community aside from just community service alone. But, you know, time and time again, we've had everybody who's been the Project 351 person come before this board, and it's been exciting to see how they've thrived, especially at the high school, but not only taken what they learned from 351, but continued it through the high school, as Owen can attest to, because five years ago, he was in the same position you are in right now. And he's the student rep to the school committee, so we look forward to seeing you more often.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I do bring this up every year, but I'm a proud parent of a Project 351 ambassador too. My daughter Caroline is gonna be a junior in college coming up, she's a junior in college now, will be a senior in college next year in biomedical engineering. She was really inspired by Project 351, so try to let it inspire you. I think it already has. So, great stuff. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Haley.
Send your family down for a picture.
If you wanna come down, we're gonna take another photograph with you, Haley, if that's okay? Tonight's photograph. (Applause).
Here we go, guys. Ready? Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. Perfect. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Thomas. And tonight's, you know, as we go to the end of the year, we sort of hit on things that have been happening, but, you know, recognition is important, and so we're not stopping there. I'm gonna ask Ms. Derek Thompson to come down and talk about the Rotary Race, which is a, sort of an annual thing from the Rotary. They have been fantastic to us, but we have a big announcement today, and so we wanted to ask Derek to tell us a little about what the Rotary's done for us.
Yeah, so for those who don't know, the Rotary has been funding a, an intensive tutoring program for us for the last, I think this was our sixth year. And so they donated fourteen thousand dollars to us, which was great. They had, yeah, it's been huge. So they had been donating eleven thousand two hundred to us each year, and so they raised that so that we could expand the program down into third grade. So we serviced, I think it was just about sixty-two kids in total that we've worked with this year. So it's about a one staff to six kid ratio. So we focused on math in grade three, ELA in math in grade four, and math in grade five. And so the kids stay after school for sixteen weeks. They sign a contract with their parents that they're going to engage in activities outside of the program as well. And so it's just to really just keep the kids immersed. There's a lot of pre-teaching that goes on, there's a lot of teaching of concepts that kids have struggled with, and the growth of those kids every year has been through the roof. So we've been doing a lot to try to track their MCAS performance. It'd be a little bit different for us with the third graders that we had in the program this year, 'cause they didn't have MCAS from the year before. But we had been essentially targeting kids that had struggled with MCAS and then implemented the program and then see how they would do the following year. And so we've been mainly tracking student growth percentiles, and typical numbers with growth is about forty to sixty. We've been targeting kids that were like in the teens for growth or really low performance. And each year, their growth has been through the roof. We've had average growth above sixty most years, with all kids in the program combined. So it's been a huge, huge help. It's a huge donation. It's really made a big difference, and it's just another one of those little things that's helped us move the needle, I think, in both buildings, so it's servicing kids from both MKG and HBB.
And we talked before, just so everyone knows, we're gonna ask the Rotary to come back for the big check presentation, which we like to do.
Yep.
And we appreciate all the work that the Rotary does for us, and, you know, just time and time again, whenever there's a need, they're there. So we thank them very much, so.
Absolutely.
So thank you. Thank you, Derek, for all your work.
Thank you. Thank you, Rotary.
Yes.
Do we need a vote to accept that check for fourteen thousand as a donation?
Might as well, my friend.
Motion to accept the fourteen thousand dollar check from the Middleborough Rotary for the Rotary Race Program with gratitude.
Discussion. Hearing none, anyone from the audience have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody. Now move on to discussion items. Owen.
Last Friday was senior night, where the class of 2019 was able to reminisce with pizza, ice cream, a slideshow recapping high school, and a replaying of the fifth grade talent show video.[1255.28][1255.28](Laughter). The next morning was the senior mystery ride, and students took a trip to a ropes course for a great team-building experience. The newest members of the class boards have been elected. Congratulations to them and good luck this year. Congratulations to Josh Young for being named the MIAA Student Athlete of the Month for the month of April. The speech and theater workshop is presenting Dats E41: Breaking Badly today, tomorrow, and Saturday at seven PM in the auditorium. Admission is ten dollars. Support their hard work at these next two shows. The class of 2021 took their math MCAs this Tuesday and Wednesday, the same day as senior exams. Great job to all these taking tests for their hard work. And I just wanted to urge everyone to get out and attend the last few home games of the spring season. Many of them are either senior nights or have tournament implications. So tomorrow is the boys' lacrosse senior night at Battisfield at four PM, and if they win, they're in a state tournament for the first time. And then today was the senior barbecue and yearbook distribution day for seniors. Next Tuesday, we have our prom, six PM to eleven PM at the River Club in Situate. Wednesday is scholarship night for those students who receive scholarships. Then Thursday is the senior last assembly, and Saturday is the graduation. And then as my final item on the report, I just wanted to thank the committee and the entire school district for the wonderful opportunity of serving as school committee representative for these past three years. I truly have enjoyed my role and cannot wait to see what the future holds. Thank you to all those across the district and beyond who work tirelessly each and every day to make sure each student in the district receives a quality education. So thank you.
Thank you, Owen. Fantastic job. (Applause). Any questions for Owen before, for his last time? Owen, and on Friday is the senior walk, next Friday is senior walk through the buildings, right?
Yep.
In the cap and gowns, which is fantastic, and everyone enjoys that. And I know, having been there several times, that the people who enjoy it the most are the teachers that everybody had when they get to walk through and see them. So thank you, Owen. Any school committee member have anything they'd like to bring up? The only thing I want to say is, again, knowing that this is senior week, I do want to thank Paul and his staff because senior week is a lot of work, and I know everything that goes into it from what I see. And so this is where, you know, everyone's flat out for sort of a week straight and more. And so we appreciate everything that you do, Paul, and everything that your staff does. And I also want to thank, especially the secretaries, especially Marcia, who goes over and above every time for those kids. And so we really want to thank her and just let people know that what everyone does. So thank you, Paul.
And a special good luck to the spring track qualifiers that'll be racing, or shot putting, or javeling. I think Jake's going after, I mean Glory this year. He's been hitting those personal records every tournament, every outing, so I think they're, next Sunday, this Sunday, I know well they'll be there, so good luck to all those folks.
Next up on our agenda is MEA report. Mr. Cuttino.
Hello, Frank.
Good evening. Since we're passing out thanks for people, actually personally, I'd like to thank Mr. Dyzel with his MCAS combined with the senior final exams and figuring out all of that over the last couple of days. That actually went very smoothly from my standpoint, so I kind of appreciate all the planning that goes into that. So I'd like to thank him for that. The only thing I have is just a reminder that we have our MEA trivia night fundraiser tomorrow, starting at three thirty at the Memorial Mitchell Club. The trivia starts at four thirty. John Healy will be doing the questions and prizes and stuff, ten dollars to get in and have yourself a good time, so I hope everybody shows up.
Excellent.
The money goes to?
The money goes to the Teacher Memorial Scholarship Fund. So it actually goes to the students of graduating seniors, so.
Any questions for Mr. Cuttino? Thank you, Frank, and I hope people attend the, at the Mitchell Club tomorrow.
Well, I'll be there, so.
There you go.
Lots going on.
Next up on the agenda is superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience. Good evening. I would like to call down, my first order of business is Mr. Ryan Sylvia with the Unified Sports Update, but we want to take them a little bit out of order and go with number two with the Masba fundraising update, and invite Ryan Sylvia and the new president of Masba, Jolie Butler. So come on down. We just had Pat Sclafani, who was that second generation of Masba, the new Masba, started off with the likes of Dave Madigan and Dave Wiley and John Siciliano, and then we went to that second generation, which was the Pat Sclafani crew, that crew that's been in for a while with Karen Marshall and Lisa Foley. And Pat's youngest son graduated this year, and he let us know last year that this would be his last year, and sort of put his affairs in order with Masba, and Jolie stepped up, stepped up, so welcome, Jolie. Thank you very much for stepping up, and Mr. Sylvia, take it away.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Lynch. We did say our, a little farewell to Mr. Sclafani at the golf tournament, which is our big major fundraiser, first week, first Sunday in May, it was May 5th this year. It was a successful tournament, and just want to take the opportunity here today to thank all of the sponsors that we had. There's too many to name. It's just, there's so much support within the community, whether it's local businesses or just individuals, and it's kind of a, it's a really nice tournament in the sense that you really get basically the same, not the same, but a core group of sponsorship and then a core group of individuals that are playing in the foursomes.
And volunteers.
And as well as volunteers and parent volunteers and just all different people from the community. It's just a nice event. And we had, we were a little nervous because we had a rain day. It was, we actually went down to play nine holes and squirrel run. I'll give them a thank you for, because we went down to a nine-hole tournament, they gave everyone a voucher to come back and play eighteen. We were able to play the nine holes, still make this, basically the same amount of money we average each year, and it was, it was a success. And so with that, I'll also add, we threw out some numbers at the tournament, just that I think were pretty impressive. Pat Sclafani, as the second acting president of Masba since it started, was there for about nine years. He raised over two hundred thousand dollars, or Masba raised over two hundred thousand dollars under his leadership, and he really went hard the past couple of years of that. In the past couple of years, we've raised just about ninety thousand dollars, and pretty much all that goes right back into the athletic program and supporting. And I can, I can highlight some different ways that we've used that money if there's any questions on it, but I won't get too much into detail. But other than that, we're excited to have Jolie join and help serve in this role as the president. She's been at every meeting as far as the golf tournament goes and even some meetings, regular monthly meetings prior to that, so she's got a good feel for what we do with Masba, and the rest of the board is staying in place, which is nice. So she has a good board to work with that has experience with Lisa Foley as our treasurer, Karen Marshallinos as our secretary, and Darren Morano as our, as our vice president. So I'll turn it over to you, Jolie.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for inviting me here tonight, and I'm
Karen Marshallinos as our secretary, and Darren Morano as our, as our vice president. So I'll turn it over to you, Jolie.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for inviting me here tonight, and I'm, I'm looking forward to working with Masba and the school department to help support the athletic programs for our students. As Ryan already mentioned, they've raised a ton of money under Pat's leadership, so just looking forward to sort of keeping that going as we move forward, and very grateful for all that Pat's done.
And Mr. Chair, as you know, we discussed the policy on our fundraising groups, and one of the concerns was that Masba had never identified, identified themselves as a five oh one C three, excuse me. And I know that Jolie has that in her, sort of in her wheelhouse, as something that she would like to do as part of her presidency, and we look forward to that, which would be a real plus for those people that make donations, who can justify them through the government as donations, charitable donations, so thank you for doing that.
And Jolie, anytime that we can help, please let us know, you know, anything that you want to run, announce, or anything like that, we'll be more than happy to, between here and we have been, some of us even attend selectance meetings, so we can make sure that's mentioned at selectance meetings, any events, especially anything you do differently. I think we all know about the mattress fundraiser and, and know when the golf tournaments are coming up, so we always sort of run those through at the same time.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would like to say, I hope you do the gold cards again. I, I, that was phenomenal, I used it, it was, I was giving them to people as gifts, and they were like, what is this? They didn't even realize at first what it was, because they have younger children, and they, they weren't in the mix on this stuff, and they're actually looking forward to it because it really kind of, it was, I used it, it, it paid itself back, it was great.
Yeah, so we've, we, we were just talking about this last night, we had a, we had a meeting, and we really have two main fundraisers that we're working with that can generate a ton of, of, of money for the programs, and the first one's the gold cards in the fall, so we will sell the gold cards, which are coupon cards that give you discounts at local businesses, and we solicit the local businesses to provide some kind of discount on the card, there's, we sell them for twenty dollars. But the real selling point for the card is that we also made it into a season pass for all home athletic events that we charge a gate for, so mainly football and basketball. We can't, you can't use the pass at, on the Thanksgiving Day game, and you can't use the pass on MIAA tournament games that we host, because the revenue goes to the state association. But you use the card, you go to three or four home games, and it pretty much pays for itself, and we, we made a lot of money off that in the, in the fall, the whole fall athletic program participates. We never make anything mandatory because we can't, but we try to encourage all the students to participate. And then the second one is one that we did this spring, which was the, the web-based fundraiser, the email fundraiser, where every student is, we made, each team makes a little video, and then they blast out an email to friends and relatives and say, hey, if you can help out our program, donate five dollars, donate twenty dollars, however much you want. And it's all kind of hands-off, and the kids do a lot of the work, and, and it generates some money. And then obviously, the third one is the golf tournament, that's the big one. We, we did kind of go in a different direction with the mattress fundraiser. We are still going to have the mattress fundraiser, but we're gonna do it with an individual team rather than the full athletic department, so that one didn't do as well this year, but it's been, it's been beneficial in the past, so.
About how much did the, the email one generate, do you know, about?
Just over seventeen thousand.
Okay, that's, that's pretty good. I was just wondering, and the reason why is, you're always skeptical about giving out a, an email address, but I will say I have not been spammed.
No.
So I use a unique address for it on my company thing, so I would see any spam coming, and it has not been spammed at all, so I'm really glad about that, because I can say to everyone, there's been no spam, this is like legit.
And that's one of the selling points, when they, you know, when I met with the representative from Snap Raise, you know, they, they really told us that they don't resell your emails, they don't distribute them, there's no spam, it's really just focused just for your fundraising efforts, so hopefully people catches on and, and it's successful next year, too.
Sounds great. Thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
We look forward to working with you.
I am as well, thank you.
Next is the Unified Sports Update, we've had quite a year, Mr. Sylvia.
Yeah, and I, I mean. I apologize for not having it on the agenda, but I asked Alicia Lane, our unified track and field coach and volunteer, and also a Spanish teacher at the Middleborough High School, to give us a little bit of a summary. I'll kind of, I'll kind of give you a preview, and then, and then she can give a little more detail about the season. But basically, we sat, I sat here at the beginning, you know, in the fall, I think, and we talked, or maybe it was even in the summer or last spring, where we talked about introducing unified sports, other than the bocce that we were already doing. And since then, we've had the unified basketball team, which you know about, and also the unified track and field team, which we started this spring. And basically, those are the three sports that are sanctioned by Special Olympics for unified sports. There's other ways you can engage in unified sports, but those are the ones that Special Olympics really pushes. And by adding those two programs, we, and, and doing some other events, some whole, some full school events, the fans in the stands, things like that, we've kind of hit all the checkpoints that we need to be, apply to be a unified champion school through the Special Olympics, and we're going through that application process now. The deadline's coming up in about a week or so, so I'm hopeful and excited that we can kind of get that recognition as a school district and MHS. I know Mr. Brandigan, as a Special Olympics Hall of Famer, will be happy if we can, if we can get that recognition as a champion school, so a lot of that is due to having Alicia step up and be our, be our coach. The track team had fifteen participants this year, six athletes and nine partners, which is a great ratio, we had a few extra partners, it's, we really look for a one-to-one, plus the coaches. And then also a thank you to the ESPs that helped with the team all season, Pat Plant, Diane Boulo, and then our nurse that came in on a daily basis, or whenever we had practices and mute scheduled, Marie Coughlin, so we couldn't have the team without having the support staff there for, for the athletes, so just a thank you to them, and I'll turn it over to you, Alicia.
Thank you guys for having me here. It's kind of heartwarming to be here on Owen's last night, because I did have him as a student. I've had Paul as a student, and I work with Josh with the Spanish Honor Society, so it's, as my first meeting, it's kind of exciting to hear all these things. And I've got something typed out, because without it, I'd probably be a train wreck. But for those of you who don't know, I'm a Spanish teacher at the high school as well as a coach, and I want to talk to you about how the season went. According to the Special Olympics organization, unified sports joins people with and without intellectual disabilities on the same team. It was inspired by a simple principle, training together and playing together is a quick path to friendship and understanding. Once it was confirmed that I would be coaching Unified Track, the reality that I would be interacting with a population of students I had never met or worked with before definitely made me anxious. I hadn't been involved in best buddies as a student or a teacher, I had no family members or friends with developmental delays or intellectual disabilities, and I had never had students in my classroom with delays or disabilities to this degree. Because of human nature, I was uncertain about the unknown. I saw that same apprehension in the eyes of my athletes, who similarly lacked exposure to individuals with intellectual disabilities and developmental delays. But as the season progressed, I watched that apprehension melt away with each and every practice. I witnessed my team become less and less segregated as each athlete worked together to improve themselves and each other. I will never forget the joy I felt when I observed members of my team, both with and without disabilities, seated at the same lunch table together in the cafeteria. This is something that I truly believe might have never come to fruition had they not grown to know each other through Unified Track. And that's why Unified Track belongs in every school. Our athletes overcame the adversity of having no track and no field, while creating a culture of inclusion, both within the team and the building. They shattered stereotypes and personal records, they came in fifth out of eleven teams on Tuesday at sectionals, and will be advancing to states, and that's just in their first season with no track and no field. And they were one of two teams that had the grit to compete in the eight hundred meter race, and the only team at sectional is willing to do the four-by-four. And I know your son does track, so you can probably relate to that. They stepped up and they did things that no one else wanted to do. I think their accomplishments speak for themselves and the importance of this program, as well as the pride and joy it has brought Middleborough High School over the past few months. And I want to correct your comment in Owen's athletic ability, I think he's an excellent athlete. No, Owen is one of the most self-disciplined persons I have ever seen, and, and I know you could probably make some comments with Unified Basketball, but it's just so great to walk the halls and see people greeting each other that a year ago would have never said hi to each other in the hall. When we practice near the baseball field, I lose my athletes, because they're going to talk to their friends over at the baseball, the baseball field and the baseball team, and it's so great to see kids included that. Before Unified, that wasn't a thing, so thank you for giving us the opportunity to have this program.
Thank you. I, I do want to say a couple things, because I think it's important. One is, you know, when we talk about the unified teams and the Special Olympians that we have, several of the Special Olympians play varsity sports.
Yes.
Straight up, not, not on the unified team, but play, straight up varsity sports, and I would also add, are very good. And then I think the other thing that was very helpful this year was from the unified team, for example, the unified basketball team, Josh came to become the manager of the varsity basketball team, you know, which was helpful and, and broadened that gap between the two, and so that was also a, a great opportunity for kids to participate. And I also want to thank that we have a, we have our own chapter, the best buddies, in the, the high school, and I want to thank those kids for participating and helping along the way, too. And it's fantastic, and I, I said at last meeting, and I can't say enough about how, what the Special Olympic rally is like, just to see an entire school come together for those athletes and just be amazed, and it's, it's impressive, especially, and the kids should be proud of themselves, but we want to thank you guys. I mean, you know, Ryan, you, you came before the budget subcommittee last year, and, and even this year, and talked about the idea for the unified, and we were very excited about it, and we thought it was a good idea, and then, you know, we started with basketball, and then said we'd try track if basketball went well, and I think basketball went better than anyone could have hoped or believed. It was just so fantastic and so wonderful.
We're still a little skeptical, and we knew we weren't going to have a track or really a field, and Mr. Brandigan kept coming to me and saying, are we gonna, are we gonna get Unified Track? Are we gonna do this? Can we make it? I'm like, yeah, we'll make it work, Mr. Brandigan. We'll make it work. What are we, so we, we found gym space, and I think their home base was in the cafeteria, which, you know, wrestling's used the cafeteria for years, we, we made it work.
And it'll be great to see when we actually have a track.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and people get to play in their own thing, and that's important.
And, and Special Olympics, I just want to add too, because of some of Alicia's comments early on, they do a great job of providing training opportunities for coaches when you start out, so there's a mandatory meeting for all the coaches that they have to attend, and there's also a, a course, an online course for coaching students with intellectual disabilities, so it's really easy to get involved, if there's teachers or volunteers in the building that want to be involved with it, and thankfully, Alicia kind of grabbed the bull by the horns and jumped right in with it.
And Mr. Chair, all of our volunteers, all of our coaches were volunteers this year. I do want to mention Andy Dyzel, who's in the audience, did, did a great job with basketball also, so thank you, Andy.
How, how is, that's as far as I'm gonna go, because it's been so long. How is your, you said at the beginning you were a little almost apprehensive, you were worried, you were concerned.
Yeah.
By the end of the season, how do you feel? You're not even there yet, but.
Yeah, I know, one more week. No, I was very apprehensive going in, like I said, I had never worked with this population of students, and I even, at the very first practice, a parent stopped by and said, you know, how, how do you feel? And she was like, I, I heard it was a Spanish teacher, and, and I just wanted to check in, and I said, don't worry, we have lots of support here that know what they're doing. But it's been really fun getting to know each, each student individually, and, and I feel like now I'm just so much more prepared to interact with all types of individuals. And I love seeing kids in the hall that I didn't know before, and, and saying, hey, giving them a high five, see you at practice later. At the Special Olympics pep rally, I, I always like choke back tears during that, but this year especially, knowing a lot of the high school athletes, it was so exciting to cheer them on by name, so it's been great.
And they're going to states, and where is that?
Milford.
It's in Milford, where?
On Wednesday.
Wednesday?
At like two-thirty.
After school?
Yep. See you there.
Mr. Chair, one more thing.
Sure.
When I think about our continuous improvement, our district plan for continuous improvement, and I always talk about the wellness, and we talk about the wellness of our entire community, including staff, and I think about, you had, you just had a teachable learning experience this spring, and I think it's just a wonderful opportunity that you've had, and I'm glad that you've enjoyed it, because I think that it does carry through for everything else you do. So I'm just, plus, my daughter saw you today, and she said, so I'm slaying, so that was another opportunity.
You're on a field trip.
So it's just so great to, to see you, and I'm glad that you, you stepped up for this, because it was a challenge, and I always say that the challenge is the, the best part of life, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Both of you, appreciate it.
I have a couple more, well, Alicia, you don't have to, I just have a couple more plugs I want to put in while, while we're here.
Thank you for bringing this forward to us, this whole concept and idea, and we really appreciate it.
Well, I hope, I hope it grows, and I hope, you know, when we start to talk about budget and things like that, I mean, we do have ESPs and nurses and things like that that we, we need to talk about to help support this program going forward, and I think, I think we're all on the same page there, but that's for a future discussion, but I want to get back to Owen, I know everyone keeps talking about him, but I just wanted to say that I always heard this like crazy fan in the top of, like all our, all our home games, you know, I see Owen at school committee, and he's like this well-spoken polite young man, and then it's like, he's got orange paint on his face, and he's screaming like a maniac at the top of him, so he's definitely Sachem superfan, so.
He's black and orange.
These two different people from school committee to, to superfan.
He's definitely Sachem pride in many ways.
Absolutely, and I know it'll be that, so just to echo what he said before, something I'm proud of right now for the spring, hopefully it holds out, is all eight spring teams, the two tennis teams, the two lacrosse teams, baseball, softball, and the two track teams are on pace to qualify for postseason. Some of them already have softball, and then the track teams are competing already. But we need a few more, we need, we need to finish out the season, but I think, I'm hopeful that we're gonna get there, so definitely come out and support whatever we have going on the next couple of weeks here. And then just wanted to echo the, the summer program, the last time I was here, I talked about, the registrations are coming in, and it's an opportunity for also our current high school student athletes to gain community service hours by working with those youth summer programs as part of their graduation requirements, so just a plug there that if you haven't, anyone who hasn't seen the summer program postings on Facebook and Twitter, it's just like any other sports registration through the Family ID website on the school athletics website, so that's there for people, too.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvia.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Speaking of shameless plugs.
Mr. Chair, my next two items are, are just that, they're, our, our teachers in this school district have been working real hard all year, and one of their goals as a team is to put together the Celebration of Arts. Celebration of Arts is tomorrow afternoon from two to six P.M., it's in the high school gymnasium, and everyone is invited. They're gonna have a nice hands-on component this year, some, some things that kids can actually go and work on, and some, some really cool things that are going on, so that's, that's tomorrow, tomorrow evening, or tomorrow afternoon and evening, two to six P.M. at the high school gymnasium, Celebration of Arts, and thank you to all of our art teachers who coordinate this and put this show together themselves. Almost, I think almost every student, if not every student, will be represented at that, at that show in the high school gym, which is.
That's, that's free, I think.
Absolutely free.
And if you come late enough in the afternoon, you might be able to stay for that's E, which starts at seven at the high school?
Absolutely, yeah.
Double-tail.
Keep it going. It's a little bit of competition with the trivia night. My apologies, Mr. Cutino, but they'll have a bunch of teachers there that, that do stay there, and, and if you're a parent, come on in and, and talk to the art teachers, and talk to them about how they're excited about what they do every day, which is important, and, and that's important for them, and important for our students. Next plug is the Internet Safety Night we have coming up on May twenty-ninth from six to seven-thirty. We have an expert coming in to work with parents. This is a parent guardian only evening, and we'd ask that parents try to attend that, it's being held here, and it's all about, all about internet safety and everything a parent can do and should do to monitor their children's social media activity. So please try to make that Internet Safety, May twenty-ninth, six to seven P, six to seven-thirty P.M., right here in this auditorium, so that's an important evening.
Mr. Chair, there's, there's been a previous one to this, that I actually attended in this room, but it was years ago, and, and as we all know, everything changes so quickly, so this is definitely a, a great, inexpensive, free.
Free.
Event for adults to come in, and really grandparents, guardians, anyone to come in and learn what to look for, because that's, the last time they told us what to look for, those key things to look for that would trigger finding more.
And Katie Gray is a national, nationally known, somebody who's an expert, and so she's coming in. It's being supported through a federal grant, the Title IV grant, which is something that encourages us to do this type of thing for our students and our parents, and this is a parent evening. She will be in the schools during the day, talking to different audiences during the day, and she'll be here for that evening, so come on out and, and enjoy that and learn. It's an educational night for parents and guardians, and, and like Mr. Givenoni said,[1798.01] And like Mr. Givinoni said, it is free, and it is something that you really should come to. Any questions on that?
I just want to point out, you know, I deal a lot with kids involved in problems with the Internet, be it through bullying, be it through making threats, or sometimes sadly enough, because they meet somebody who is there to hurt them. And the sad part that you have to deal with a lot of times when you do that is you have to deal with the parents who are like, "I wish I knew more, I wish I knew this, or I wish I knew that." And so I would really encourage people just to spend a few minutes to come. Your kids are on the Internet, they're doing things. Things are going to happen. More than likely, something is going to happen to a kid from Middleborough, and it could be your child. So just please come and learn. As Brian said, you, I think parents walk away with that with something new that they don't know, or they didn't think of that way. You know, I had, I attended an Internet Safety piece just this past April in Washington. And two things that always strike me as really interesting, one is the concept of, we think about people perping kids on the Internet as kids going far distances to, to meet these people. The fact of the matter is that when kids are perped on the Internet, their perpetrator is on average, 80% of the time, less than eight miles away from them. They are not going across state, they are not going to cities, they're eight miles away from them. The second piece is, interesting enough, for kids who have been involved in sexual exploitation on the Internet, 94% of them describe the person who perped them as a friend or lover, having never met them because they feel that their conversations and their dialogue on the Internet has made them a friend or a lover. They don't view those people as strangers. They view them as friends. And that's important to know because, you know, we spend a lot of people, a lot of times talking to people about being afraid of strangers and aware of strangers. They don't, kids don't view these people as strangers even though they've never met them because they've had long conversations with them on the Internet. And I think even if you just watch TV occasionally and watch the show Catfish and see what, how adults are duped by what happens in the Internet, and then imagine being like a 12- or 13-year-old or 14-year-old who doesn't have, you know, doesn't have the experiences that those people have. So I, you know, I would really encourage everybody who could possibly attend to attend.
And earlier this year, we had a representative from Plymouth County come down and through Sachem supporters and Middleborough Matters, I believe Mr. Dizell and Donnie Jamison arranged for that evening for that person to come down. And it was fairly well-attended, but we'd really like to pack the house for this event. Again, Internet Safety, May 29th from 6:00 to 7:30 right here in Nichols Junior Middle School Auditorium. Any other questions? Next item is an RFP update. Mrs. Sarah Hickey, Director of Business and Finance, just sort of an update on where we are in the process with the before and after-school program.
Thank you. As you know, on April 8th, I published a request for proposals for before and after-school care. That was picked up online by a number of potential vendors. I had a bidders conference on May 3rd, which was attended by two vendors, and the proposals were actually due on the 15th, which was last Wednesday, and we had four submissions. So I am in the process of reviewing those submissions. The committee to review the submissions will be meeting tomorrow, and we are well into the process of what's going to be really exciting for the students of Middleborough.
And we'll have four presentations tomorrow afternoon.
Yes.
Between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. in the Career Center at the high school, and we'll listen to the proposals. Each one has agreed to come in?
Yes.
Each one will, each of the bidders will be represented, and we'll be hearing from them, the committee will be hearing from them tomorrow evening and making recommendations to the school committee.
And just so everyone's clear, one thing that we've had a discussion about, that we have a discussion about is this, it's, it's my intention to hold a separate school committee meeting just for that because our next school committee meeting wouldn't be until the 2nd, would be the 13th or 14th. That seems too far to wait in order to, we want whoever the successful applicant is to be able to outreach to parents immediately because they're going to have to start setting up for next year. Even though we know who they are and everything like that, they should still be around. So I'm going to send a note out this weekend to everybody about available dates to see if people can make it. I'd like to do it even, we can even do it like right after school for some of you, and that would be the sole focus of the meeting, nothing else. The plan is to see what the committee comes up with tomorrow, the Budget Subcommittee is part of that, to see what the committee comes up with tomorrow, whether it be, we present multiple people to the school committee, or we are just overwhelmed by one, that that's the program that we sent to the school committee. So I'm not sure what's going to happen, but the school committee will get it in some way, shape, or form to vote on. But again, we'd like to do it as a separate, a separate meeting. I, my guess would be, it will probably be right after graduation because I think next week is pretty, a pretty tight week for the most part unless we can get one in right before, like right after school time, if that works with you guys, okay?
Mr. Chair, might it be helpful to find a mutual, mutually agreed-upon date right now? Is that possible? Or is it something you want to do through emails tomorrow?
It's up to you guys. What do we, we can figure that out. If we can do next week earlier, well, you know what, I'm going to, I'm going to say wait because Greg's not here.
Right.
So I will send that out as an email and we'll go from there, if that's okay.
That week of June 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to do it, I would like to do it really no later than the 4th of June. And so if, I know we have, for example, Wednesday's Scholarship Night, but if we could, if we were able to meet at like, say, 4:30 or 5:00 o'clock, we could be done before Scholarship Night begins, so that kind of thing.
But that'll be next week.
Yeah, if we could do next week. So I'll send out, I'll send out dates and ideas and times, and we'll see what can work for people. Does that make sense? Okay, great. Thank you.
Great.
And thank you, Sarah.
Okay. Next on my agenda item is, we have handbook presentations, and I'd like to invite all of our administrators down front here. If we could have everybody doing presentations in the front row and maybe some supporters perhaps in the second row, and approach the podium when it's your turn. Some of these folks to the school committee, some of these folks you know and you've seen, you know Andy Dizell, and he's up first and...
Never seen him.
And we also have Stephanie Ray, who's from the Nichols Middle School. We have Jeremy Goble, who's from the Burgland Elementary School, and we have Chris Phoenix, who's from the MKG. And Andy, you're up first. Welcome, Mr. Dizell.
Thank you so much. Thanks for having us. Mr. Cutino, thank you for the kind words, sir. I do appreciate that. And also a shout-out to Ms. Lane, who does an exceptional job with all of our athletes and our partners. Very briefly, there are three itemized changes that we're proposing for our handbook. And I do need to apologize to you because the first one is actually not completely true because we already have Unified Basketball and Unified Bocce in our handbook, but we hope to add Unified Track and Field to our spring sports selection. The second on our list is to streamline, clarify, and raise the expectation for the following foreign language honor societies. And you see French, Slava, and Spanish in front of you, if you have that document in front of you. And really, I'm very proud of the department's work to raise expectations for not just the content area for which the Honor Society is awarded, but also to raise the bar and establish a minimum standard of a B-minus average for all other secondary school subjects in addition to the content area. And so they, that is obviously streamlined, as you can see, using the same verbiage from national requirements for these associations. And lastly, Mrs. Colleen Levy is a, is an extremely talented educator and a passionate one at that, and she has taken the reins of our National Honor Society. And over the time of her tenure as leader or co-leader of this program, we're constantly raising the bar of expectation for National Honor Society. So the document that you see before you represents a .15 increase on the cumulative weighted GPA and the GPA that students must maintain to maintain their status in the society. And in short, that's it.
It's good stuff.
Questions about it?
Most you approve?
Wait a second.
Second.
Discussion. Other than like to say thank you guys, I mean, I think this is fantastic. And we should also point out that even though specifically mentioned the National Honor Society, most of the Honor Societies have community service components in everything they do. So while we only have a certain number per year for kids to do, that isn't the only amount they do. Most of the athletes have, you know, are required by their coaches to do some community service and pieces like this. So the kids do a lot of community service over in the period of time, so we should compliment them for that, too. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you all very much.
That was easy.
We actually had Mr. Brannigan at the table and he didn't say a word.
I know. He's saving his voice for graduations.
Let's go!
As Mr. Chair just said, he's saving his voice for graduation. Next is Stephanie Ray. She's the Assistant Principal here at Nichols Middle School. Greg Thomas is here to support her. And Stephanie, please, welcome.
Thank you, thanks for having me. So we have about 10 changes that we'd like to make to the handbook, we hope to make to the handbook. The first one is page four of the handbook. It's changing the language from "Students are allowed to use electronic devices in the cafeteria" to "Students may only use cellphones with teacher or administrator So really, we want to stress that kids really need to communicate face-to-face during that social time. We do recognize the need for parents absolutely to communicate with their kids, so that's why we wanted to say with teacher permission. So if you need to communicate to your child about something, not a problem, just tell the teacher and it should be fine. The second one is actually a little bit larger. It's changing the promotion language. So the new language would say, "Students must demonstrate mastery of skills and academic understanding necessary to be successful in the next grade level to be promoted. Every student is unique and develops at their own rate academically, socially, and emotionally. The decision about a student's promotion is based on the individual's growth and on the recommendation of teachers, counselors, specialists, and school administrators, as well as standardized testing results, report cards, and the child's potential to achieve. Failure to pass all core academic subjects will result in the student being required to attend summer school. Only two subjects can be made up in summer school. If the student does not successfully complete his or her summer school program, they will not be recommended for promotion. Successful completion of a summer program of studies means the student's year-end average is raised from a failing grade to a passing grade. Costs associated with summer school program, including transportation costs, are the responsibility of the parents. Parents and guardians are notified in writing at the close of the second trimester if the child's in danger of not being promoted to the next grade level. The principal has the authority to make the final decision regarding the promotion of a student." So the reason for this shift is really we want to look at the whole child, not necessarily how it was before was just specifically passing a class. And we think that kids are unique. We want to look at every kid in Middleborough. We want every kid to succeed, and we want to be able to look at them, we need them to be ready for the next grade, and that might look different for each kid. So that's the reason for that change.
Can I ask a question related to that? Paul had put forth this year, so that the, for lack of a better term, is the winter summer school, just to, because, because of the fact that, A, most kids don't like to be in school in the summer, and B, it just offered an opportunity that you weren't going back almost a year later for some kids to correct on things that they missed. And so I'm just wondering, is there any way that that might be available, or you could look at that to see if maybe those pieces could be available because it may help out, you know, in some way earlier than later? That's all I was thinking. And Greg, I'm looking at you as I ask that. And I don't know if that's feasible, but I just throw that out for a question since we just discussed the change.
I would say that summer school is something we need to examine. It's, it's, to be quite honest, I don't know how effective summer school is, how we do it right now, and that's something I think we'll look at as we move forward into next year. It's not something I was able to tackle this year, but it is, it is something we'll look at because it needs to be, it needs to be meaningful and not just something to go to, to, it's two weeks, and I don't know how much you're going to get out of two weeks, really, of summer school, other than a little more remediation, but it's something that's on the table.
So another change we like to, we hope to have is adding special activities. So at the end of the year, we've traditionally had eighth-grade field trip and dance, Field Day, and we're hoping to add more fun and exciting things for all of the kids to enjoy at the end of the year. And we really want it to be a special privilege for kids. So we added the section, "Students may earn the privilege to participate in special activities through good behavior, good effort in academics, good attendance. Students who are a discipline concern or are failing to put forth satisfactory effort in academics, habitually absent, may not be able to attend these events." So please know it's our intent to have all students participate in these activities. All exclusions will be determined by school administration, and it is our expectation that students will earn the privilege to participate in all activities by practicing our core values, trust, integrity, generosity, empathy, respect, and strength every day. So this would be sort of as a last resort thing, working with kids all through the year to create success plans for them, to really intervene, put things into place to support them. And if it's not working, then we have that. Page 16, which is adding to the disciplinary guidelines. Right now, we have suspension and detention and those sorts of things. We really would like to hopefully add community service and restorative justice. So basically, restorative justice and community service sort of go together. It's resolving disciplinary issues really in a cooperative and constructive way. It's really kid-friendly. There's always something behind the behavior with kids. So it really gives them the opportunity to take responsibility for what they've done, which is one of our core values, really reflect on their actions, what's going on. It gets us in the position to be able to intervene and really build the relationship with the kids. Maybe we don't know something about them. It also lets them know we care. You know, we're willing to take the time to get behind what happened and not just come down with a consequence. Then it's really the make-right. They get to understand the effects of their behavior, how it impacted our community. And then they have to sort of be part of the problem-solving solution of how are we going to make this right? So this could be facilitated really by a school adjustment counselor, administrator, a teacher, and we have some pockets of time we can use. We have dial, homeroom, we have after-school time. It could be part of a detention. So an example of when we might use that is, let's say, an eighth grader breaks the paper towel dispenser in the bathroom. Well, that's a cost, you know? Something's going on. So they get to really own responsibility for it without necessarily having a punitive piece to it, but really a make-right. So maybe they're talking to the custodian with the parents, learning about what it takes to put that on, what it costs. And then maybe they don't have the money to replace it. They're coming up with, "Well, what can I do? Well, maybe I can help the custodian after school for a certain number of hours." And really just sort of build community, builds pride, and really developmentally, it's helpful to the kids. It's growing kids who are problem solvers and think about their behavior and are held accountable.
Ultimately, what it does is it gives us another tool, aside from suspension, we talked about that, I think, the last school committee meeting, where we're suspending kids and it's not changing behavior. This is an opportunity to, there will be a consequence, but it's also a teaching moment and hopefully an opportunity to correct what they did wrong and start to change that behavior.
If you don't like school, then why wouldn't I want to be at home?
Right, right. That's exactly right.
Yeah.
And then a few other ones under the same sort of section, Level 1 Infraction. We just made a clarification. It said electronic devices, but we wanted to align that with our acceptable use policy and the cellphone policy, referring back to the handbook on that. We also added under level-one gang references. This is because the pop culture we're seeing come in in inappropriate ways. So we want to really be able to address that with the kids.
I want to make that clear, we're not having gang issues. It's more of a pop culture kind of thing, what they're wearing, so.
We just removed a duplicate in there. And under level-three, we added calling 911. We had it written a few different ways, and we wanted it to be very clear in there. And the last thing is we changed under disciplinary guidelines, when you have in-school suspension, it was to report to the suspension room. But that's not really working with where our suspension room is. We want kids coming in the door into the front office instead of sort of wandering the school. So those were all of them.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair? Go ahead, second.
Second.
Discussion. And thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate it. Anybody have any other comments? Seeing none, others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Two gentlemen you may not know, some of you may know if you've had children in the school, but Mr. Jeremy Goble is closest to me. He's the Assistant Principal at Henry B. Berkland School.
We are pretty close, me and Mr. Lynch.
Oh, yeah, pals. Mr. Christopher Phoenix, the Assistant Principal at Mary Kay Good School, is handing out some handbooks to you.
Good evening. You all should have a memo addressed to Mr. Lynch from the elementary admin team, I believe, in front of you. If not, we have hard copies of that.
Do you have that hard copy?
We have hard copies for you. What our plan is, is in looking at the elementary school handbooks, there are a lot of edits and revisions that need to be taken care of. Our goal this year was to sort of put something together, propose some edits and changes to get us kind of through next year with the hope and expectation that next year we really have a really thorough overhaul of the handbook. Primarily, as we looked at it, to really align it to what the high school and the middle schools' handbooks look like and so that we have that consistency across the entire district. So there are a lot of proposed changes. A lot of these are to the formatting and a word here or there, or a sentence here or there, just really trying to tighten it up for next year. I think the biggest piece that we're looking at adding involves student discipline and really aligning it with what the high school and middle schools have. So our plan tonight was to kind of go through, the way that the memo was written is just by page, what our edits, our proposed edits are. And then we can certainly talk and answer any questions about each of these individually. Our hope is to kind of go through these sort of quickly because there might be some questions that we have about some more headier, headier issues, so. If we don't have any questions yet, we'll go ahead and get started. Okay. So you all have the memo in front of you. So page one, and looking at the, and you also have the handbook in front of you, so if you want to cross-reference them, reference them. The safe-to-school information, it's on a page that gets torn out and returned. So we wanted to change that and just make sure that parents had the safe-to-school numbers, which we're going to put on the next page. The district vision statement and all that information, the vision and mission statement have been, they're going to be replaced with the Strategy for Continuous District Improvement, which encompasses the district mission statement, vision statements.
On item, on item one, will you be updating that elementary handbook code of contact verification form with Sarah's information?
Yes, yeah.
Go ahead.
All of the, the other pieces are...
You can carry through that.
Yep. For next year, when we look at this, Ms. Carolyn Lyons has also been involved in this process. And there's a lot of stuff, like our appendices really need to be updated and correct policies and procedures put in there. So we're really trying to like, kind of create a bridge handbook where we get things in there that need to be in there for next year and then really overhaul it for the year after and really try to make it look more like the secondary schools. Staff names have been updated, so pages nine through eleven, staff names will be updated. Page twelve, again, we've kind of noticed that things were kind of all over the place. And one of the things that we want to do under what is now the entrance age heading, to put this, a couple lines in here. And also, there's a required form section on page twenty-one, which relates to registration and just kind of having, putting registration where it should be and putting it all together. Page twelve, there's a chart in there. We wanted to add a line that included, that language about each elementary school includes a thirty-minute lunch and a twenty, twenty-five-minute recess. And also a little bit of information about school, my school box and contact information for the district school lunch people. Page twelve, one of the things that we've noticed is, and we've had challenges with dismissal, so really tightening up what our, what our language says around dismissal. And one of the things we want to put in there, what happens is sometimes parents will send in a note saying Johnny's going to be a bus, or instead of bus three next week, he's going to be a parent pickup on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So our secretaries take our notes on a daily basis and they take that and they write a change dismissal pass and that gets sent down to the students, to the student every day. So it's really an unmanageable system for them to keep track of a single note for three days or four days or however many days. So the expectation will be that parents will send in a note every day that there's a dismissal. We have gotten really good feedback from parents on this because there have been parents that have been sending in a note for multiple days for a change of dismissal. And we've explained that that makes it really hard for us and they are like, we'll do whatever it takes to keep our kids safe and make sure that dismissal happens. Because dismissing at the complex, we have eleven hundred, twelve hundred kids that are bus dismissals, YMCA, or after-school dismissals, walkers, pickups. And we are pretty vigilant about keeping track of all of where our kids are going. And it's a pretty challenging system, so between, between both schools. We're trying to communicate between those two schools. So there are a couple of things in here about dismissal, that's one of them. The other piece about dismissal is we're having a hard time understanding why parents would change their student's dismissal to a walker. Like, we have a procedure within the district that kids are either a walker or they're not a walker. So how could a kid be a walker tomorrow if they're a bus kid every other day? So changing that, eliminating that, the word walker from the change in dismissal language. Page thirteen, adding a paragraph that begins with, the paragraph that's in the handbook, the current handbook. I'm just reiterating that riding the bus is a privilege and talking about the safety and expectations and dangerous and disruptive behavior may result in temporary or long-term removal from the bus. Just being very clear about that. Page fourteen, just adding the, please refer to Appendix B for further explanation on attendance, the attendance laws. Page nineteen, protection of children, again, refer to the Procedure for Reporting Suspicion of Child Abuse or Neglect. Again, tidying, tightening up all the appendices and then the language that directs people to the appendices. We also want to add on page nineteen, email or text in regard to our Blackboard Connect because those are options as well, if they're not currently in there. Page twenty, please notify the school immediately. We want to include custody status because that's a really important piece for us. Parents come in and they want to dismiss their child, but the other parent had just filed an order against that other parent. So we need to have that stuff on file. I can't tell you how many times we deal with, well, is this parent, can we dismiss this student to this parent? And we have to call the primary custodial parent. So just having that information on file, updated custody status. Page twenty-two, adding, under the heading Toys and Cellphones, just putting in their comment about, a line about schools are not responsible for lost, stolen, or damaged personal items. Just kind of covering ourselves around kids that bring things to school that they shouldn't even have in school and just saying that if they get lost or stolen or broken, it's not our responsibility. Page twenty-two, depending on what happens with the RFP, removing the YMCA section and just adjusting to whatever the after-school program will look like. Trying to tighten up and be more efficient with our language around certain areas in the handbook. So removing the first sentence in science and just saying that Middleboro Public Schools uses Discovery Ed Science Textbooks as our core resource for science. Page twenty-three, removing the first three sentences of the second paragraph and just replacing that with ongoing professional development, dot, dot, dot. Social-emotional learning on page twenty-three, just adding responsive classroom, master social thinking. I mean, that's a, that's a program that we do use for our social-emotional learning. And at the elementary level, we're really looking to focus on social-emotional learning next year, actually across the district. And so that's going to be one of the things that we really focus on and implementing and adding to our student handbook. Pages twenty-six and twenty-seven, there's a few headings there that we just wanted to combine. And the line about the assessments are used to determine students' responses to intervention and instruction as well as to identify areas of strengths and weaknesses within the curriculum. And we would remove those other headings with the other, the language underneath them.
Under the field trip heading on page twenty-two...
One second. Going back to that, Mr. Chair. When you, when you put in the words strengths and weaknesses, we might tweak it to challenges. I don't like to call it a weakness. I'm focusing my inner Toby right now. I'm sanctioning it because she would have said that. Toby absolutely would have said that. Sorry, thank you.
Okay, so on page twenty-two, under field trip headings, add some field trips required fee, which must be submitted with a money order. And no student would be denied access to a field trip due to financial constraints. Also on page twenty-eight, we're going to remove the outdoor classroom heading and paragraph. Where not all schools use the outdoor classroom. Page twenty-nine, we're going to combine the building-based support team and the child study team headings and paragraphs. Page thirty-one, we're going to remove and replace the 504 combination section. The updated info from the Middleboro High School handbook. Page thirty-three, we're going to remove the heading and paragraph for the recognition programs because the schools use different positive behavioral support systems. For example, Berkland's best ticket systems, Mary Kay Good has their respectful, responsible, ready ticket system. And the MECC has their bucket filler, so they're different at the different schools. Also on page thirty-three, we're going to add the heading for educational rights of students who are in foster care. On page thirty-seven, for the before-school section, the first book, they arrive, not to arrive earlier than eight forty HBB in Mary Kay Good and no earlier than eight thirty a.m. at the MECC.
Mr. Phoenix, if I could just interrupt for a second. That's an example of one of those things that, as we sort of customize the handbook for each school, that would be in there. So it's not, the outdoor classroom is another example. We wouldn't necessarily remove it because at MKG, they do use the outdoor classroom, but it's not available at MECC.
Thank you, Ms. Wilbourn. On page thirty-nine, we're going to replace the information on discipline of students with a disability with the updated discipline procedures for students with special education services and procedure for suspension of students with disabilities in alignment with the coordinated program review process. Also on page thirty-nine, additional sections will be added. A description of the emergency removal of students added for the suspension. Add a paragraph to the description of suspension, clarifying what suspension is. Also, suspension, which is more consistent with chapter two-twenty-two, including updates to the appendix. Under out-of-school suspension, there will be a new section, description, describing the procedures for suspension under ten days. Page fifty-eight...
So again, that is what is currently in the high school and middle school handbooks. And we, ours doesn't align directly with that and it really should. It really needs to indicate that the suspension process is the same across the district. So that just, it needs to be aligned. We're taking out what we currently have and just replacing it with, we're proposing that we take out what we currently have, replacing it with what's already been approved by the community with, for the high school, secondary, the middle school.
On page fifty-eight, the wellness policy will be updated pending the school committee approval. So we're looking at a lot of those updates and changes to the policy. When you look at the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty recommended handbook language changes, again, section five oh four, looking to change that so that it's more aligned with the high school a little more updated. Same thing with the discipline of students. We want to add that again to make it a little more aligned between all the schools. Those are some of the things that we took from the high school handbook to add in to our handbook. Also some changes under the inappropriate items section for the handbook. Removing things like diapers from there, adding things like cellphones, smartwatches, camera device, which wouldn't be allowed. So just updating some outdated things from the handbook. And the discipline for procedures for students with special education services added as well, changed in the handbook. Anything else, Ms. Wilbourn? That's it, Dan?
Motion to approve?
Hang on a second.
Discussion. The only real question I have in all the ones we went through was on page thirteen, was dismissed, parents and guardians can, the request of dismissal and changing to a walker. So as I read this, and correct me if I'm wrong, I, as a parent, can't ask for my child to be put on a different bus to go visit a friend. So this would be essentially the same thing. I can't ask for them to go visit, take a walk with a friend to spend over their houses. My responsibility to bring them wherever they need to go. And so it just, it conforms with what we're doing with the buses, with what we're doing with the walkers.
Just, it is a matter of really tightening up our dismissal process. And it's unfortunately gotten fairly loose. And we are always trying to help parents out and trying to be flexible and understanding. But the example you gave of, you know, Johnny's going to Suzie's house for a playdate, like, we need to be able to say no to that because the bus, the buses, Suzie's bus may be full and that adds another student to that bus. And I wish you could see the amount of dismissal notes that our secretaries go through on a daily basis. It is the bane of their existence. They get phone calls, they get emails, they get text messages, they get handwritten notes, they get typed notes. It's, it's, a good bulk of their time is spent going through the dismissal process, the change in dismissal process. I mean, it's everything. Like, this, right now, this time of year, we have kids that are walkers now because they walk for baseball practice. And we allow that. And like, how do we say no to that? You know, the kid's got to go home on the bus and then their parent has to drive them to the field that's right next to the school. You know, we have, we want to be able to be flexible with people, but also make sure that all the kids get home, get to where they're going safely.
Mr. Chair, I was thinking the same thing. But we've, and just recently, we've had lots of discussions about dismissal at the complex in other meetings. So, I mean, we're really looking at this and we're trying to figure out to make sure, because it can cause delays and the delays will start to cascade and we don't want that to happen.
We don't dismiss our buses until we know that all of our kids have gotten to the after-school program, all of our pickups have been picked up, and that all of our walkers have been accounted for on a daily basis. So if we get, I don't even know, maybe forty changes a day, fifty changes a day.
Times two schools.
So you talk about delays with the buses. That's, that's, that plus, okay, these kids are going to baseball practice, so they're walkers now, so they get added to our list. And we, it's pretty remarkable to see the dismissal process.
It's not mentioned in the handbook itself. And one of the things I would think about looking to add to it is essentially, just because a parent declares their child a walker, doesn't mean we're going to accept it. Perfect example is, it happened to me when we went to Mary Kay Good. I got a phone call saying that it was too far for my kids to walk till I explained to them that I met them at the corner and we walked, the three of us would walk home together. So it was different. But I mean, you know, there are some parents who will say their child's a walker and you look and it's a mile. And I know people have been called up and said, we're not going to accept that. They either have to take a bus or a parent has to pick them up. We can't accept that. So, but that's not in here. So maybe we just want to add that we review those things and...
That, so my question is, is that a policy that's determined by school committee? Or is that the bus company? Who determines who a walker is?
I think it's, well, I think what happens is, in the cases that I'm thinking about, it's a parent saying, my child's going to walk. And the school saying, no, that's too far. You know, it's too far for a first grader to walk, you know? I think there needs to be some explanation and I think that's what's happened in the past, which is people have gone back and said, okay, I meet my child at the corner and then I walk them home. That's every day. That's different than, you know, like, my child's going to Forest Ave from Mary Kay Good and they're just going to walk and they're a first grader. That's, you know, a little law, a little far.
One of the issues that we have had since I've been at Berkland is parents who wait across the street for their kids, who, these kids should be riding the bus. And the people who live over there complain because people park their cars in front of their houses and on their streets. And the parents get out and then our, we have safety, safety staff that walk the kids out. And they're not sure, like, do I check this guy's ID? Like, he's a walker, the kid's not a walker. So I, it's one of, our dismissal process needs to be tightened up. Because, like, I don't know what the answer is. Like, I was under the impression that school committee determines whether it's a mile or half a mile or whatever it is. And then the bus company determines who a walker is based on their address.
I think it's a little both. I mean, I think, you know, I think that, you know, if you're a walker, then... know, if you're a walker, then, in my mind, if somebody's, in, in the case that you put that a person's going to walk, I don't think it's un, unreasonable to say to the parent than meet us, if, if you, if your child's walking to the corner and you're putting them in a car, don't be across the street because that creates safety concerns for us. They could, they're, you know, as we know, there are now nice new parking spaces all along Main Street that, you know, people could park, you could walk up to that corner there, you could meet your kid in the corner and bring him in a car. I don't see that as being a...
But we also have parent pickups behind the building. So the parents who want to pick up their children should be picking them up behind the building.
Right. And so if it's a parent pickup, it's where every parent pickup should go, not, hey, I'm calling my kid a walker and I'm going to meet them around the corner. That's not okay.
And I think that's what the problem is.
And so it, it, to me, it depends on the address. So if, you know, if the ki, if, you know, if the kid lives in South Middleborough and they're saying they're a walker, I think we would raise a flag as to why they're walkers. It doesn't make sense to us. That kind of thing.
But right now, when we, when I was young, we, all the students from Uptown first grade did walk home.
Yeah.
To Pearl Street and Forest Street and Everett Street. We walked home. That's what we did. There were no buses uptown. Now we do buses uptown, um, because of safety and security mainly. But where that first bus stop is, is really, to me, the distance that we can allow for walkers at this point. That's the way I look at it. We haven't really done mile and a mile and a half in Middleborough, especially with the downtown area. So right now, if, if the first bus stop is at Oak Street or, or Court End Ave or Station Ave, then somebody right up to that would, would be a walker. But if a child wanted to ride a bus, they could ride a bus to that point. So we've really loosened things up in terms of a mile, mile and a half, because right now, we'd, we're dropping off at Everett Square, we're dropping off at Oak Street, we're dropping off at Forest Street, we're, we're Arch Street, all of those streets downtown, Pearl Street, School Street, uh, Pier Street. We're, we're dropping off at all of those streets that, with that, years ago, were walkers. But because of safety and security, we have been dropping them off. It's not to say we couldn't change it in the future, um, but right now, that's the way it has been.
But, you know, I also think it's, just related to what you had said, I think it's reasonable to say that if you're calling your child a walker and every day you're picking them up, you're picking up your child and you pick them up in the back.
Correct.
There is not, you know, the, the idea of parking across the street. I mean, you know, to my extent, I don't mind, you may think it differently, but I don't mind the parking on Main Street because they're all walking up and out of the way. That's different to me. But, you know, I think there needs to be an explanation, especially when, you know, somebody, like I said, from South Middleborough saying, I'm a walker. Well, wait a minute, you know, like, and they have to explain. And, and to, in my mind, at that point, they're not a walker, they're a pickup. And so you establish where you want this ch, children picked up. And I get, because I go by there a lot, I've been there in the past, that it's tough and you get to wait in line. But you're choosing to pick up your child, so that's where you have to wait in line because that's where the pickup is.
The, the reality with the way we do our dismissals is pickups get picked up first.
Yeah.
They're the first one out. So these parents that are picking their kids up as walkers, they're the last ones to leave the building.
And, and most of the time, there's a police officer there to help out with traffic. And so it's not an unreasonable flow of traffic. I mean, there's just a lot of people who pick up kids.
Out behind the building.
Right.
And they, after the first week of school, they, they move on. And they're out of there. They're the first ones to leave.
They're usually the first ones that let us know that they're clear, and then the kids are still loading the buses. But I don't think it's reasonable to tell you, my child's a walker and I'm going to park across the street every day, they're going to pick me up. That's not...
It's not, and I, and I think we need, I don't know, if it's a policy or whatever it is, so that, so that we can, we can enforce it.
I mean, personally...
Is that hap, is, I mean, is that happening a lot? Would you say there's twenty cars out there in a day? The re, the reason why is, as somebody who used to... Okay, the reason why, as somebody who used to conduct business at the Old Town Hall in Plymouth on Lincoln Street, there's a school across the street. And I used to tell my client at the town hall, I need to be out of here because if not, they will ticket my car, because there was no parking on Lincoln Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, from two or one forty-five to two thirty. There was like a window that they, you were not allowed to park on that street because the buses would do pickup there. It's almost a similar thing. I mean, if, if that's the case and we have a problem here, then maybe we might want to look at it as a separate item altogether from this.
I, I would say to you too, I, I know it's a little late now, but if you think that's an issue, then put it in the handbook and spell it out to parents.
Yes.
That this is not going to be allowed.
Yeah.
And we'll, you know, the committee would approve it. And at that point, it's...
At least it's in there.
In my mind, you can say, I'm sorry.
Then it's enforceable.
This is what the school committee approved. We can't change that.
I think this change does, uh...
Okay, no, that's fine. All right, thank you.
And you can also see how it goes next year with the language that we're putting in here now, because if we need to, you know, make it an official policy or, or really be able to put its own section in there or whatever. This has been an issue. We, we've worked with Chief Perkins on this, and, and all of our school resource officer have been there and observed it for, for seven years that I've been there. And, and there is a, there is a group of people getting together, looking at, um, our dismissal and try to be more effective and efficient with it. But it is, it's a public, you know, safety issue as well.
And also, I want to bring up something too. It, it's related to the same paragraph because we discussed it in negotiations. And I know we're not supposed to necessarily discuss negotiations, but I do want to bring up a piece that I think is reasonable, which is that, you know, there are times parents can come to drop off their child. They're not to hang out beforehand. And if for some reason, somebody's hanging out beforehand, it's against the law to idle for more than ten minutes. So they should not be sitting in the parking lot with their car running because that, those fumes go back into that building, and that's unacceptable. And so, you know, there, there's a reason that people are supposed to drop off their child at a certain time, because that's when we have coverage and that's when, when we go from there. And so again, this is not, you know, it says I can't drop off my child till X, so I'll line up twenty minutes beforehand and just keep, that's not acceptable either. And so, you know, we're going to, I mean, to be honest with you, what came from it is I'm going to have a conversation with the chief and ask if somebody, please go around, if people are idling more than ten minutes, that they deal with it because it's illegal. And so we're going to go from there.
I've, I've gone out, we, I've had, you know, my, my office is right there, and I have a car pull up right at the front of the, where, where they do drop offs, and it's eight o'clock in the morning. And our bell doesn't, our bell doesn't, the doors don't open till eight forty. And I've literally walked out my door, gone outside and said, you're idling, you can't do, you can't idle here. And I was like, I said, you go park here somewhere, and if you want to wait or go to, you know, Cumberland Farms.
Certainly what we need to do as administrators, to get out there, just like Mr. Gobel says, and, and handle it.
Do we have to get green jacket?
Let people know.
We have two donut shops downtown, two coffee shops. People can stop.
I appreciate, appreciate the dialogue.
Mr. Oakley.
Mr. Gobel, I, I wonder if you could talk about, how do you, uh, what is the system like to determine how far a, a kid is from, um, from the school? Do you actually have to Google map everyone?
That's, that's a great question. And that's, I didn't know if it was the school committee that determines that or the bus company, because we had a few instances recently where the bus company was saying, well, you, the school tells us who, who our walkers are. And I said, I think it's determined by the bus company. Like, we, you guys determine what the policy, if it's, if it's a half a mile or a mile, but then they're supposed to have software or a program that determines this is, you know, point seven five or whatever. So that, they tell us who our walkers are.
Mr. Oakley, the state has laws, but what we've done, or what the school system has done prior to my arrival, what the school system has done is arrange for bus stops that are downtown in the downtown area. So a student that might go to Court End or a student that might go to Station Ave would be considered a bus student if they wanted to, but they're within walking distance if they'd like. So it's, it can be like that for a parent. Um, but really, we're talking about a mile and a half. Um, but that's not to say, because we have, like I said, if we had to really tighten up the budget with transportation, we might eliminate all those routes downtown. But if we did that, we should be prepared to really have a s, a pretty intense discussion with those folks downtown.
And, and to, to put it in perspective, Mr. Oakley, my house is probably, is a little under a mile and a half, but probably about as close as you're going to get. Our, our houses, because we live right across the street from each other, is pretty much about as close as you're going to get to that. You know, anything beyond that is, is really that mile and a half that the state requires.
Yes.
But I, I think the other thing to point out too is that the stops are not, they're not stops in front of our houses. They're stops at, at key interest. So essentially, if you will, when my children went to elementary school, I had two places to look at that they could be picked up, you know, one a little, one on each side of my house, uh, essentially. And so the only thing I think the school's asked was the type of bus stop they were going to. So, you know, the bus driver would expect them there.
And that was done in the name of safety, as I understand it.
And for the, and for the high school level, we choose to bus everybody within that, that same limit because...
Correct.
We would have kids that didn't even go to school. They just wouldn't make it. I mean, two, forty-five minute drive is a three-hour walk.
Yeah.
If they're a marathoner.
Any further discussion? Then the motion on the table is to approve the changes as, as listed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen. We appreciate your help.
Thank you all.
Thank you for, everyone for doing all that work.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Uh, we put on MSBA update, which was the webcams. Um, the webcams are operational. Um...
One is.
One is.
Wayne was the second one. I don't know, Mr. Cicilline, I might be able to give us an, an update on that.
Sean, did you want to say anything about that?
Ah ha! Mrs. Cicilline walks through the door. Welcome, Mrs. Cicilline.
Welcome. How are you? So, uh, we have the first one done, which is, uh, getting outrageous hits, which we love. Um, the second one is ordered, is programmed, and is ready to be mounted. So we just dealt with the hosting company today, and they are gonna switch it over for us. So we just got to get the cable crimped and, uh, VLAN programmed for all you tech people out there, and, uh, then it'll be good to go. So...
So that's cool. And, uh, do you have an idea on how many hits you're getting? I mean, just roughly.
Uh, just, just yes.
It's quite outrageous.
Uh, yesterday, we had fourteen hours of total viewing with the average viewer staying for fifteen minutes.
Most of that time's just Owen in the classroom looking at, uh, so I don't know.
He's not in classes anymore.
Oh, okay.
Um, but yeah, so the first camera obviously is, uh, was set up to be a bunch of, uh, main portion of the building. So you can see the C, the C building, the B building, and most of the A building. The second camera is hoping to get the s, the far corner of the A building, as well as all of the fields. Um, it's going to get probably fifty percent of the stadium, but we won't be able to get the other half because that's in the parking lot. Um, but we're going to get, we're going to aim the camera as far down the back of the building as we can so that we can get, uh, the main majority of the fields. So...
That's awesome.
Mr. Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I was down, uh, at the construction kickoff meeting today at the high school, walking the site, and the people from the MSBA were very excited about the webcam. We went back into the c, uh, construction trailer, and they had the webcam feed up on the screen in there, and it, they're pretty excited about it as well.
So they don't have to bother us anymore? They can just sit in Boston and...
Well, I know, uh, I know Compass and the, the contracting company are using that too, is they just leave it up so that they can see that they're monitoring, they can see where people are and what's going on. Um, and, I mean, everyone I've talked to thoroughly enjoys it, so.
That's great. It's been fun.
It also gives us the ability to do time lapses. Um, you can do time lapses, we can do recording, we can record up to so much, uh, space with the program that we have through, uh, RICE, which is the company that we're using to host it. Um, so the time lapses are cool. I posted a time lapse maybe last week or, yeah, I think it was last weekend, it was an entire week of construction, um, which, right now, we're just moving dirt around and pouring footings, which isn't really exciting. But when the steel starts to go up in a week, you'll really be able to see what's taken place, um, which I think will be really cool.
Yeah, really cool.
That's pretty well. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cicilline.
So that was, um, the update on the MSBA. Did anyone have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
My typical Friday ritual beyond the webcam is, uh, after going to the tavern for their prime rib special, which is great. But, uh, after having that prime rib, my wife and I usually come up, go drive in the parking lot, and we look. And last Friday, it was amazing to see the construction going on with the fields right adjacent to the YMCA property. They got that cut down deep, waiting to take over part of that parking lot. Uh, so they're moving, they're moving. And then, like I say, I do that loop each, each Friday at least, and really get out there and look at it.
It is funny to, like, to hear from people from the town, and how many people tell me, they swing in the back of the, you know, drive around the back of the park, the high school, and want to see what's going on. And I'm like, you can watch the webcam. They're like, there's a webcam. I'm very excited, you know. And so it's very interesting to hear.
And the Gazette last week, I think, said it all, Mr. Chair.
Chair said, just simply exciting times.
Exactly.
And they are. They're exciting times for everyone in Middleborough, and, and especially for the students who'll be in there in the future.
Um, buh, 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 buh. Motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. So MASC has their summer institute up, which is July twentieth, four to six, and July twenty-first, eight to twelve thirty. Um, Mr. Stevens and I have attended that in the past. I would recommend it if people are interested. Um, and then again, the joint conference. The joint conference has a, uh, special, if you buy in before the end of June thirtieth, you get a bonus. So, um, that'll be on there. Policy updates, uh, today will be the second reading of the wellness policy. So we'll, uh, bring that up for a vote at the next meeting. Um, the foster care amendment, I still have to work on, so I'll have that for you guys for the next meeting or the meeting after, as soon as I can get my act together. We took care of action items. Um, other is a couple of field trips. Does anyone have anything else they want to bring up before I move into exec? Seeing no one. The chair will be doing executive session for procedure one to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline of dismissal of complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. Your head is, uh, to be discussed in such an exercise, shall be notified and running body by forty-eight hours proposed executive session. However, the notification may be waived upon written agreement of the parties. Um, that's my motion.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, those in favor requires a roll call. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Discussion.